Testing zoom inbound, testing one, two, three.
Excellent. Sound fantastic.
Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Absolutely.
Excellent. I won't talk about you then.
There's nothing to talk about. All right. All the council meeting guys.
There you go. All right, everyone. Oh, here we go. Welcome, everyone. Welcome to the uh. January seventh, uh, committee of the whole meeting um transit. So I'd like to tell you what's going on, but I don't have an agenda in front of me. So. Oh, thank you. I didn't get one. So here we go. Oh, that's called the order. Here we go. One point one. Uh, land acknowledgement. We'd like to begin this meeting by acknowledging that we are gathered on the traditional ancestral and unceded territories of the Inc Kappa and Silk People. Adoption of minutes, two point one committee of the whole meeting minutes, December the third, twenty twenty four recommendation that the minutes of the committee of the whole meeting held on December third, twenty twenty four be adopted. Counselor Egan, call sir. Etchard, did you put your finger up there? Counselor Etchard? That's what I'm wondering about. Uh, any air, any errors or omissions? All those in favor? Host carried. Uh, general matters, delegations and recognitions, unfinished business, new business, five point one transfer fair review. Presentation, uh, mid hat melt, business development advisor, B C Transit. Um, I think that's it. We are ready to go. Over to you. Mid hat. There we go.
Uh, thank you. Uh, let me just share my screen in one second. See that?
Can't see anything yet.
You can't see it?
I can see it mid hat on my end. It's maybe just not the council chambers.
Hold on one second. Oh, there we go. There we go. Excellent. You are live. We can see you now.
Okay, great. So, hi, everyone. My name is Mitav Malak and I've been tasked with conducting fair reviews across the province. Thanks for your attention this evening. I'm looking forward to sharing our recommendations from what I've been doing. So um, we do fair reviews to evaluate fair strategy on a regular basis to account for increases in operational costs due to inflation and investments. And we do this work across the province every couple of years to ensure we're taking into account recent and projected operational costs and annual inflation to support um local governments and maximizing revenue, attracting and retaining ridership while considering affordability. Our primary goals are to align with B C Transit's fair strategy guidelines while working to support um, the city of merit's objectives in more financial sustainability and funding transit operations. So um, let's get into some background. Oh, um, no. The, so we have the safe restart funding agreement and it basically um funded up increased operational costs during a time with decreased ridership during the pandemic um, which we signed off in October twenty twenty. And while this contribution agreement has been been in place, we've been asked to limit annual average increases to two point three percent until April first, twenty twenty five, which has been about five percent or sorry, five cents per year. So we haven't really um, done that, but now we have an opportunity to reevaluate our fares now that the agreement is ending and the fair options um, we'll look at today are can be enacted anytime after April first at your ultimate decision. So looking into some stats, um, merit has four fair products, cash tickets, two monthly pass options, an adult pass for anyone over eighteen and a concession discounted pass for students, seniors and college students and our largest revenue sources come from cash. Um, and those who have a monthly pass with adults making up two thirds of that. So that's great. And the last time there was a fair review, it was actually April twenty seventeen and at that time we simplified the available fair products. We eliminated eliminated discounted cash fares and tickets for students and seniors. We also realigned the monthly pass option. So high school students, college students and seniors paid the same discounted rate and increase the stu- we increased the student pass rate by two dollars, decreased the senior and college student pass rate by two dollars. And before this, bear reviews um were reviewed in two thousand and seven. And um, just so you know that adult monthly passes haven't increased in eighteen years. And the only notable change that's happened in the past eight years was the introduction of the provincial wide um, transit for children under or youth under twelve program, which was introduced in two thousand and twenty one. Um, this is a beautiful graph that I just wanted to share with you guys, which highlights cost for running transit continues to increase year over the year over year across the province and you can note that merits transit system generates more fair revenue consistently um, compared to comparable transit systems, and this results in a higher cost recovery rate. We expect that um, over time, uh, even with a change of fares, cost recovery will be going down um, due to the rising costs. Um, we did a comparison with similar sized transit systems. And we found that merits cost recovery is almost double the tier average and fair prices are in line and fairly similar to other systems. However, fares haven't really increased for about eight years on average across the board. Um, the transit funding agreement to fund total operating costs is fifty one percent contributed by the province with forty nine percent made up by the municipality. And revenues from fares help fund the municipal portion and the remainder that isn't funded by passengers um is funded through property taxes. And last year merits um transit fares actually resulted in seventeen percent of the total operating costs, which is again, better than most other similar sized transit systems.
So Ma- Ma- I have a question for you. Looking at your graph where it says Kimberly, Quinell, Clearwater and Merritt. Uh, why is Kimberly at fifty four percent and why is Clearwater at fifty nine percent? Just wondering.
Um.
As far as the provincial, as far as the provincial uh costing.
Um, I would love to defer this question to Danica just because she deals or she works more with other systems.
I'd be happy to answer that now or or would you like to wait till the end of the presentation?
Sure, let's wait till the end, Danica, please.
Okay, I'd I'd be happy to cover that for you.
Excellent. Thank you.
Um, moving to the next. So this is kind of um overlaying our fair strategy guidelines with merits current fair structure. Um, our primary goals is to align the fair strategy guidelines. Um, so um, we want fair products that are attractive to customers, marketable and affordable. And our guidelines state to charge ten ticket booklet for nine times a single cash ride fare. So regular passengers can get one free if they buy in bulk. Adult monthly passes are priced between twenty to thirty times um the base fare and discounted. Um, concession pass will aim to give passengers a fifteen percent discount compared to a regular monthly pass. And in merit, you'll see that everything is aligned. Um, monthly passes twenty one times the base fare and um, the only thing is the concession pass is a little bit more discounted, which is like nine percent more than the guideline suggests. So we're going to be looking to bring that more in line in our options review. Um, okay, so here's the meat that um. And before we get into the options, you should know that after reviewing a lot of data and working closely with Kevin and Cynthia, we landed on three options that align with our fair strategy guidelines while taking into account um, requests for financial sustainability by staff. And these action, these options were carefully designed to balance cost recovery, support ongoing service expansions and maintain affordability for riders. Each of the options will have multi-year fare increases, which we don't often do, but we did because Kevin asked to combat um annual rise in costs to operate the transit system. And um, the ridership and revenue impacts of each option were assessed using industry standard air elasticity models. So you'll see that in each of the options. And we looked at many scenarios to identify a fair price that would maximize cost recovery. We looked at even higher fair prices beyond what we included in the following options, which would result in a um, actually a high projected ridership loss and would result in a minimal revenue increase. So because of the minimal financial benefit um and the potential negative impact on ridership, any higher priced fair options were excluded from consideration. So we wanna balance affordability for everyone, ensure that we're attracting and retaining ridership and maximizing revenue for the system. So here we go. Option one is a small and gradual price increase. We propose to increase cash fares by a quarter. Hold it for a year and increase it again by a quarter. Everything um follows our guidelines, nine times um the single ride fare for tickets. Um, for the monthly pass, it's a twenty two point two times the cash fare. And then it's a sixteen percent discount for for the discounted pass. And then um, you can see in the dark blue, the increase to revenue and ridership loss um, based on the results from our elasticity model. And usually we see ridership goes down with a fair increase, and this is just a best guess according to the model. And um, we're gonna be sharing options that decrease ridership the least while maximizing revenue. So this is the minimal increase. Option two proposes to jump by fifty cents in um the first year in April. Hold for a year and then go up again by a quarter. Tickets will follow the same um nine times a single ride fare and the monthly pass will do a bit of a larger increase since monthly passes haven't increased in eighteen years and um, here we'll have it at twenty four times the cash fare and the discounted monthly pass will be a fifteen percent discount. And if this option is selected, you'll see that we're estimating a seventeen percent loss in rides in the first year and then another four in twenty twenty seven. This option, we think, has the greatest potential for cost recovery, but risks affordability because the discounted monthly pass increases by twenty four dollars over three years, which could be a lot. And um, with the more aggressive price increase, ridership goes down significantly and revenues don't increase too much if you look at it. So here is um kind of the best of both worlds. We jump up by fifty cents like an option two in the first year and then set the monthly pass at twenty times the single ride fare instead of twenty four, resulting in greater affordability for regular riders. And then our discounted pass is again fifteen percent reduced. And our tickets is again like nine times the single ride fare and this all aligns with our fair guidelines. So I'm looking at um each of the three options as well as the baseline. If we didn't change, this is kind of what cost recovery is gonna do over the three years and you'll see our recommendation is in orange. So um, in terms of next steps, once a fair option is approved, we'll work on marketing to run a campaign and notify riders for a fair change to be implemented after April first or at your discretion if you wanna do it later. So just wanted to say thank you so much and I am open to questions.
Thank you. Mid head. Um, I had the one question. Um, I do have a couple of other ones and I'm not sure if this is for you or um. When I look at uh the table for comparison affairs in a compare uh comparable transit system, we have merit at eight thousand six forty four and our cost recovery is six point eight percent. And then I see all the rest. What would be an optimum um recovery that you know, sixteen percent obviously is not the greatest in the world, but what is like an optimum recovery that transit would like to see? Like, I'm just wondering what that number would look like.
Um, do you want me to answer that mid hat?
Uh, yeah, sure, if you like.
Or or do you have a? Do you have?
Um, no, all I was gonna say is that typically each system um likes to set their own goals and sometimes um, though there are internal goals for systems, they might not advertise them. So I don't believe merit has set um goals and sixteen point eight percent is actually quite good compared to other systems.
And then I'll get the answer on the the other situation. Um. When we talk about merit um at eight thousand uh six forty four, do we take into consideration any of the outline like the fourteen, you know, basically with outline, we're about fourteen thousand five hundred. And I know, I think we go to lower Nicola and stuff like that. And I'm just wondering, is there a T N R D component on this as well? Or is this all covered by the city of merit?
Yeah, so these numbers are actually from QDA's um statistics report and they go in and um, look at transit or population and ridership across Canada. So we just um to be able to compare across um systems, we use their numbers and I'm not.
C L.
Uh, so a couple of, I just I guess a follow up about that is who's paying for the routes that go to uh lower Nicola?
Yes.
And outside of our municipal boundaries, who's paying? So we recognize that we have a tax levy for routes that are within municipal boundaries. Who's paying for the route that goes outside of municipal boundaries? I can, I can take that.
True.
So um.
Is this you?
Yes, it is. So uh, through the, through the chair, um. The municipal cost of transit is by and large borne by the city of merit and um, for each of our transit partnerships, um, they can have what we call a community transit partnership agreement with other agencies or um bands. And I believe right now merit has two such agreements, one with um, uh, one with Cook's Ferry and the other one with um.
Lower Nicola?
Yeah.
With, are they called lower Nicola with with the lower Nicola band and um B C Transit isn't privy to the details of those agreements. And I know that in the past I've worked with somebody or so trying to dig up a copy of what the one, what the agreement is with lower Nicola, but I know that um both sort of both of those governments do make some payments to merit uh to cover at least a portion of the service that is going out to service those communities. And if if there was interest in changing that or updating that particular financial agreement, that would be something that would be done between the band and the city of Barrett and that I could certainly um help facilitate and support.
So I understand the bands, uh, the signing agreement for the bands, but when we're running out to lower Nicola and dropping people off in lower Nicola, that's a T N R D issue. So are you saying it's up to us to strike a deal with T N R D um uh on a class sharing agreement?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
That that is also something that I can um help you facilitate. I don't believe there is any. I don't know that there is anything in place currently, um, but if you wanted to explore that, I'd certainly be happy to to help facilitate that. And that is something that is common within transit systems that are um supporting neighboring communities.
CFO?
Your worship, uh, the T N R D currently makes a ten thousand dollar a year contribution.
Okay, just wanted to know that because I wasn't sure. So thank you very much. So there you go, Danica, ten thousand dollars a year. Thank you.
Perfect. Thanks.
Um.
One more question.
C L.
So I just wanted to, I know that the the mayor asked specifically about um the for fifty four and fifty nine percent for the other communities for Kimberly and Clearwater. And I would like maybe uh to get some clarity for council on what the model should look like in regards to costs. What is the, what was or is the model that is projected for? Who contributes what? Um? If if the province is paying fifty ish percent, how much was the model projected to be for ridership coverage and for taxation coverage? Because I know this is not where it should be. Um, but I think it's important for council to understand how it was supposed to be costed amongst those three things. The province ridership and um taxation.
Is that something we, I don't wanna put people on the spot. Is that something we can see in the future? Okay. Okay.
Would you like me to speak to the?
Yeah, please.
Um, if I have a slide that might be easier, I don't know how hard it is to switch over. Um, but I I can, I can, I can speak to it. Um. No, how do I present?
There's the share arrow at the bottom middle of your screen. If it's anything like mine, Danica.
Oh, there we go. See it yet?
Not yet. Hey, there we are. There, cool. There we go.
So the cost sharing between um local government and provin- provincial government is a legislated amount. And it varies for each system depending on what kind of transit system you have. And um for a entirely conventional transit system, so this might be in some bigger centers like in Kamloops where you have all scheduled service. Uh, the provincial share is forty six point six nine percent and that's a legislated amount. Um, it's not something that B C Transit or myself can um sort of negotiate at this point for you. Um, on the other side, we have um custom transit or your handy dart uh, which has a provincial share of sixty six point six nine percent. Uh, there's some recognition from the province that in those kinds of transit systems, there's um fewer riders and each each customer takes sort of more one-on-one care to help them on the bus, off the bus and um, costs, operational costs are higher. And merit transit is what we call a paratransit system. So it's sort of a a blend of the two because you do have some on request service a couple of times during the day as well as predominantly scheduled service. And that's why you see that your provincial share is in between the two and a little bit closer to sort of the conventional transit percentage. So some of the other systems that you're looking at, Kimberly in particular, they run on request. Um. I think it is something like forty hours a week. It's sort of all day. They have almost like one bus that runs Monday to Friday um, that is dedicated entirely to on request service. So they lean more towards that sixty six point seven percentage because they're operating a bit more like a custom transit um system. Or people are booking rides, they're getting picked up at their house or their business and then they're getting dropped off at a location um that's prearranged. And all this is done with bookings in advance um, which works out well for some people, but it's not how the majority of our transit riders um use the system. Uh, so that's where you see some differences in in the, in the different transit systems and um how you get, how you can sort of see where where merit lies at that fifty one percent.
Yeah, thank you. C L.
And so when we're looking at that, that uh graph, that slide, Danica, it shows that the revenue and the property taxation should be closer to fifty fifty. And we're not in that position, correct? And there is no way for us to get to that position? Uh, through the chair, it's I wouldn't look at it as a goal. It's sort of a a a symbolized diagram that we show the different sources of of uh funding for each transit system. So it's intended to show the sort of primary sources of of revenue and I wouldn't look at it as a goal. I don't think that there are there's no transit systems I'm aware of in B C that would be that, that would have that much cost recovery. So I wouldn't um I wouldn't try and get to something like fifty percent.
Uh, through the chair. Um, through the chair, the line is a dotted line that was arbitrarily put um just to demonstrate that it's a mix of property tax and um passenger fares, but it wasn't ever dictating that it was fifty percent. And like Danica said, there is no system, even like Victoria doesn't have fifty percent of passenger fares making up transit um costs.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Etchard.
Um, with these numbers, I know we had had a presentation in the past from Danica and um, so if we do the twenty percent like the options were you with the two fifty and then the fares at about fifty dollars from the forty two, which is probably about a twenty percent. Um, do you expect with recovery that we'll see some improvement so that we're above the sixteen point eight? Like, would that be sustainable with the high increasing costs? Because I mean, they the fact that we haven't done in eight years, I'm concerned that by, I understand with COVID because everything was kind of uh, put on hold for everybody, but it would that be like the I'm concerned like second option that if we go too high on the passes that we'll see a decrease. So but you need to increase it, obviously, but I'm just wondering what you think, obviously, because you suggested option three, but.
I think option three was CFO, option three was kind of a collaborative effort.
Yeah, so the forecast recovery actually continues to decline even with option three. Yes. And so that is something that um, we realized in this process, which is why we changed that advocacy angle. So this is the fiduciary responsibility to the rate pair um trying to at least maintain close to today's recovery levels or recognizing that the exponential increase in costs that's coming as few years, see that recovery, even with fair increase continued.
Any more? Counselor Egan?
Yes, thank you. Um really great presentation. I thank you for this, but I'm just wondering if we have any more up-to-date numbers than twenty seventeen? Because it's pretty hard to project what we should be charging if we don't have actual costs.
I don't know if I am able to speak, but through the chair, um here are actual costs from twenty fifteen, sixteen to twenty-three, twenty-four, and then projected costs according to the um three-year budget.
I don't understand that. What are you, what are you saying?
So.
Yeah. Still.
Yeah, so basically what they're showing us is that in this particular graph that we see what our costs, cost, operational costs were over the last few years and what our cost recovery, I believe, is the blue line.
Mm-hmm.
Um and uh it's going to continue to go down even though our fares are going up because of rage in relation to the cost, operational costs. So the, the rates haven't changed, but we do have the data about how much revenue per year and ridership per year between twenty seventeen and now. We do have that information, but we know that the rates haven't changed since twenty seventeen. So we're, they're using that um the rates from twenty seventeen to kind of determine what an increase in rates might cause in a reduction in ridership. That's projected, it's not absolute.
I know, but I was just,
Yeah.
we have the numbers, the current numbers, then why don't we use those?
Well, they, they are using the current numbers. They're just not using that, there's no change in the rev, no change in the fees.
Okay.
Since twenty seventeen. But we know what the revenue was year over year versus the cost.
Okay, but we don't.
Yeah, yeah, they're, they're showing you. So if you go back to, if Midhat could go back to um option three. So what we can see is that in twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, we're looking at a hundred and four thousand dollars in forecasted revenue, almost a hundred and five thousand dollars in forecasted revenue. We could, they could show us twenty-three, they could show us twenty-two, but ultimately in our, this fiscal year, we have this much forecasted revenue. Any changes in fees, we're seeing that next year we'll have less than ten thousand dollars increase in revenue with option three. So ultimately, it's not material in any way. Ten thousand dollars doesn't, especially since we know that the cost of transit is probably going to go up more than ten thousand dollars in twenty, twenty-five, twenty-six, right?
Okay, I see.
Yeah. Does that help at all?
Yeah, yeah, I got it.
Yeah.
Okay, you kill your mind.
Yeah.
Counselor Ogan.
Um thank you so much for the presentation. Um I, I found it, it was very informative and I appreciate the, the three options. I think they are clear. So when we talk about balance between cost recovery as well as affordability, I tend to agree with option three. So I do have some concerns though, but see, uh when we talk about option three and revenue increase, option three offers a moderate revenue increase of eleven percent in year two and five percent increase by year four, which is slightly less than option two, but much better than option one. So that's one of, one pros. Um ridership in fact, so all of them are, there is, they are witnessing some or they are experiencing some um loss in ridership. So some of them are higher than others. The projected ridership loss is eleven percent in year two, I'm talking about uh option three, and uh four percent by year four. So when we talk about cost recovery, so option three aims to approve, to improve cost recovery from fifteen percent to sixteen percent over the next two years. So all that is good. So when I review all these options, option three, I would say yes, let's go for, for that one. So um when we talk about um while option tip, option three provides a good balance, the ridership loss is eleven percent in year two, and it's still a concern to me. So my question is, what steps are you planning to take to address and mitigate ridership decline?
Um. Is that for me?
Anybody can grab that one? Anybody?
Okay, so through the chair, um it's expected that um people will potentially like choose to walk instead of take the bus, but it doesn't mean that it's like number, it's eleven percent of the population. It's eleven um percent of the total number of rides. So if you look at it that way, it does feel not as significant. Um and then we do have um affordability programs in place um like the BC Bus Pass for people um who need a more affordable option. And then, of course, the concession pass will support those that need it. And um yeah, costs are going up across the province for all sorts of things. And I think it is just part of that.
Yeah, I just feel that um there should be some um continuous monitoring the, the ridership because it's, it, it's important to know how this is going to impact specifically to low-income families in, in our ridership. So um also I'm thinking about um the what are they, when, when we talk about an increase, it's like, okay, so what are we getting in return? Right? So are we talking about better, better, better quality of, of the service? Are we talking about other type of incentives? Are you talking about a marketing strategy so that we can create some type of education for these people to understand why we, you guys are increasing these prices? I just feel like uh there is going to be increase in any option, so there is going to be loss of ridership, but there is needs to be a little bit of um educational component that is provided by, by you guys.
Totally, and we will be doing a marketing campaign um to notify riders and have them prepared for the price increase.
CEO?
Um Mr. Mayor, to sort of continue to address Counselor Ogan's question, I think ultimately, um I don't think there's demographic data that's collected other than the number of different types of pa, uh monthly passes that are purchased. Uh or yeah, monthly passes. Um so it would be hard to know specifically which demographics are being hit. But ultimately, it's not BC Transit making the decision to raise fees, it's council's decision. And so it's a waiting of how much do you think should be covered by the user versus how much do you think is covered by the broader tax base of the community? Um you know, depending on where you sit in regards to the use of transit and the importance of transit for access, uh access for all. Um any one of us can use transit, not every one of us can drive, right? So or even walk or ride a bike. Um so that's where you guys as a council have to make that decision of where you want to balance accessibility for the riders uh or for the whole community versus how much your cost recovering versus applying to our general tax web uh base.
Thank you. I also think, no, not, not raising some of these prices over eighteen years is the issue. It's something that needs to be hooked at more than every eighteen years. Because now all of a sudden it becomes this big deal, right? So Counselor uh Baxter.
Have you seen in other municipalities when you've increased the cash single ride that they've actually pushed the rider to buy a monthly pass or other tickets?
Um yeah, that is uh common. And oftentimes we see visitors or people who aren't taking the bus as often will be doing cash fare. But um regular riders do tend to prefer monthly passes. So it, it is just logical sense that people who rely on transit should have affordable um transit options like in the form of a monthly pass.
Oh, well, I work in a high school and I know a lot of students don't realize the cost over a month. They're willing to fork out the two bucks every single time they go on the thing because they don't realize the long-term cost of it. So is there education coming into the high schools to say, hey, look, this is affordable, this is better bang for your buck?
Um we could definitely take that back to our bus-ready program. Thank you for that.
Counselor Turner?
Um I understand the uh, the need for an increase in cost, uh but I, I'm, I'm looking at the increase for twenty-five, twenty-six. It goes up to two dollars and fifty cents. Uh twenty-six, twenty-seven, it stays at two dollars and fifty cents. Yet if you look at the projected um total revenue versus the merit cost, the revenue um stays stagnant, but the cost is going up. So that means our taxpayers are absorbing more and more. Um. Is there consideration for also a slight increase for the year twenty-six, twenty-seven to balance out the merits cost? You can put it anyway that, well, that no, option two also has no increase in twenty-six, twenty-seven. It's all the same.
So just so we're.
Yet our costs go up. If you look at the graph, our costs are going up every year, but our revenue is not.
Just so we're aware, this is informational. We don't make any decisions here tonight, so. Um and I guess that's a conversation for us because ultimately we make the decision.
Yeah, because I think that's, I mean, the, the, the broader community already absorbs transit cost as in every community. It's not just merit. And but it'd be nice if we could kind of balance it a little more.
Something for a conversation. CEO?
To thinking about the cost here and what they're, what they're recommending is that you're going to find very quickly the tipping points where ridership will go down significantly. Um and we won't cost recover as much because we're not getting as many fares. So what they're presenting you is, is that what Kevin or the CFO and, and the transit team was kind of look for that tipping point. And I think if we go much higher than, I think, three fifty was it, that we, we'll see, see significant loss in ridership. So we'll end up having to pay more through taxation anyways. So the idea was to sort of have a bit of a bigger jump with option three in that first year and then let people just kind of, you know, have that sit in there and prepare for something in two years, right? So again, for those low-income families, um it, it, it gives them more time to figure out how to manage that additional cost uh if riding the bus is their main form of transportation. Um but yeah, it doesn't get us long if we add twenty-five cents a year for the next few years. It doesn't take us long to get to that tipping point of not even making the same cost recovery level, sadly.
Transit team, any comments before I go into the next question?
Um yeah, through the chair, I just wanted to echo the statements that were just presented, but we did want to give um riders a bit of a break after we do uh an increase. It's been a long time since they've faced an increase so that they would um see that it hold for two, um a year after it happened so that the next time it comes, it's not such a shock and it doesn't feel like costs are continuing to grow, go up. People forget by the time it's twenty twenty-seven that a fair increase happened in twenty twenty-five.
Richard.
Um yeah, no, that statement makes sense. I have an increase now twenty-five percent or whatever it may be and then wait a couple of years and then maybe you have another one. Um how, what are the payment options for people on the bus right now? Do they tap debit cards or do the riders or do the bus drivers have to actually have like a, the um container for taking the coins?
Uh yeah, so through the chair, it is only cash. Um and then if people want to buy tickets, they go to a local retailer to be able to buy tickets and monthly passes. And BC Transit is working on um alternative solutions. Um but that's not going to be going into place right away. Um but yeah, at the moment it is cash and then people get a visual validation that they put enough coins into the box.
We have the boxes upstairs.
Okay, so they, they just pay with coins right now?
Okay.
Yeah.
Next. Counselor Egan?
Yeah, I was just wondering if you've ever considered family passes? I don't see that on here because I look at this and it's fifty dollars a person. You've got two teenagers and two adults that, that's two hundred dollars a month. That's fairly significant.
Um. I think that one of our systems does have a family class in Kamloops. And if that is something that we want to be uh developing, we can certainly take that back. Um yeah, at this moment, we are just recommending a, a simple fair increase.
Hmm, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? So thank you very much for your presentation. Appreciate it. Thank you for taking our questions. I know sometimes it's hard to be put on the spot. Uh but it's not easiest thing in the world to do. Uh moving on, presentation. Oh, so CEO?
Can we just have, uh we're going to have to bring this to council for resolution for the increase?
Yeah.
Or not. Um can I potentially have some direction on how to um draft that uh that resolution? So if council has a preference for how we draft that resolution?
I would say option three.
Option.
Option one, two, or three, how's that?
And, and can we also perhaps get direction to explore other types of passes like the family pass? So we'll put that as a resolution as well? Hmm? A yearly pass, something with, I don't know what they can come up with, but if there are other options for passes?
Sure.
Um.
Yeah, why not?
Okay, so we'll draft a couple of resolutions about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Um everybody on transit team's okay with that? Excellent, thank you.
Yeah.
Uh five point two, uh Counselor Richard, did you have anything else or are you just going to make the motion? Okay, motion's done. Oh, I guess we should vote on the motion. Okay, oh, you're right, right, right. It's suggestion, right? Uh five point two transit route options, presentation, Jen Getz, Transit Planner, BC Transit. Jen, you're up.
Hi, everyone. Can everyone see my screen? It looks like I'm just waiting for Midhat to close out of purse.
Haven't seen anything yet.
There we go.
Oh, you're coming, there you are.
There we go.
Oh, you were there.
And. How was that?
Wait, we're seeing you, but we're not seeing anything else. There we go.
Great. Fabulous. All right. Good evening, everyone. I'm here today to talk to you about some routing considerations and Middlesbrough Bridge. As you all now know, I am here today with my colleague, Danica White, who is the governor, gov, government relations manager. And we, we both, um this is me, Jen Gets, Transit Planner, and we overlap in the Thompson-Kootney region. I'll start off with some background information. Um as you'll know, Middlesbrough Bridge was impacted due to the twenty twenty-one flood. And at that time, Route two and three were combined into Route two twenty-three uh to avoid the bridge. Um at the time, the change was considered temporary. It's now been several years. And now that the bridge has been reconstructed, we are able to return to the original routing. I will show you a map on the next slide of the pre-flood Route two and Route three routing. So here we have um the Colletville neighborhood served by Route two and Route three serving the Diamond Vale neighborhood. After the flood, the route, the routing was changed to um to be the Route two-three. And it's a loop route that goes out from the downtown exchange to Colletville, back to Diamond Vale, and then it loops around back to the downtown exchange. So we have a number of considerations when we're looking at potentially re, returning to the original routing. I won't go through them in detail on this slide for time, um but I will be delving into them more on the following slides. So our first deep dive will be into the first consideration, which is that returning to the original routing would remove service along Midday Valley Road, which currently provides service to destinations like the Barkman Industrial Plant. So I will go back to the route map here quickly and just show you that, as you can see, the existing route does serve Midday Valley Road where the Barkman Plant is. Um the pre-flood routing doesn't, um as you'll see here. So that is a consideration. I will note, though, that the stop level data for um the stops at the Barkman Plant are quite low. Um so I've circled here the sum of the boardings and the alightings. Alightings are when people are getting off of the bus. Um and this is data over the last, over the last year for weekdays. So there is very minimal impact to existing ridership, something to consider. So there is very minimal impact to existing ridership, something to consider. And as well, there is some on request service that is available um. At certain times of the day that can help with um that could be, could help. Employees to still get to and from the Barkman and uh plant if this service was to be removed. So that's the first consideration. Secondly, um, returning to the pre-flood routing. Would serve the demand identified through public engagement. Um, for direct service from downtown to Bob's Mini Mart. Bob's Mini Mart is a very popular destination, as I learned from some public engagement for the art for the Transit Future Service Plan. Um, this came up quite a bit. Uh, people are currently um frustrated that. They can't get directly from timing point A, which is the downtown exchange on the map here. All the way to timing point E, which is where Bob's Mini Mart is located. Instead, they have to go all the way out to Colletville beforehand and then come back to get there. They can get off a a couple blocks away from Bob's Mini Mart. But with winter, that can be challenging or mobility, that can be challenging. So that's also something to note. Um reverting to the original routing would solve this issue. Because as you can see, people can use the Route three directly and go right down to timing point E that way. So that's another consideration. Um. Thirdly. We'll delve into uh the consideration that returning to the original routing would mean that customers traveling between Colletville. And parts of downtown or between Colletville and Diamond Vale would need to transfer between Route two and three. Uh. Back to the map quickly here, just because it's divided out into two separate routes. So people would need to transfer if they're going from one area to the other, whereas the existing route, as you can see, it's just one, one route. People can stay on the same bus. I will note, though, however, that most people are not actually traveling between these areas. They're actually more likely to travel to or from Colletville or Diamond Vale to or from Walmart, the College or Lower Nicola areas. So perhaps this isn't as much of a issue. Lastly, I will mention that returning to the original routing would mean that Coldwater Avenue West is served. So back to the map here, you can see that currently. This area of Coldwater Avenue, sorry, you can't see my cursor, hopefully you can now. Um, Coldwater Avenue right here is not served. This part is, but not the western west portion of Coldwater Ave. Um, if we were to revert. It would be served. Um. I will say if council does decide to keep the existing routing. Coldwater Avenue West could still be served, but it would have to be done through an expansion of of service hours. Which would have to be approved both locally and provincially. All right, and. I will also say that that. Um, that serving Coldwater Avenue West was a fairly high. Uh, highly desired service that was identified through the Transit Future Plan Public Engagement. And before I open it up to questions, a couple of notes. Firstly, that if council does decide to return to the original pre-flood routing. Um, we would be able to implement this in the late spring of twenty twenty five. That would be the timeline that you are looking at. The other note is that. If we do return to the original routing, the schedule may change ever so slightly just to for to accommodate increased runtimes. And increased runtimes are expected in communities with increasing traffic and other changes within a community. So just something to note. And that's all I have. Um, so I will open it up to questions now.
Thank you, Jen. Can I get you to go back to the map that's gonna be cool serving the Coldwater Avenue West?
So the original, yes.
So, uh, I guess what we should do is make you aware of the fact that. We do have a large um furniture manufacturing company coming in. That is looking to have about a hundred and fifty to a hundred and eighty workers. Uh, up on Lindley Creek Road area up there that probably most, some of them would be using the bus to get there. So. Not that I'm asking for the old route, because I mean, when you've picked up one person in three years at Barkman. Uh, doesn't seem like it's really a good uh deal with money. But on the Lindley Creek turnoff just after the bridge, um. I guess we'd have to talk about somewhere where people could stop and get off and get on, because I'm quite sure people who will be working at that area. Would want to be able to get off and on there. Oh, it does kind of stop, but we might have to have a different stop. That might be just our problem. That's probably future council's problem. Um. So, yeah, um, I guess we'll have to look at that. It's our problem, so totally disregard everything I just said, so. We'll we'll work on that. Thanks. Uh, Council Baxter.
Um, I would like to return to the original route because I work in a high school. And every single high school student has come up to me and said, can we go back to the old route because they think I can help them? So I'm. And even teachers that take the bus in the morning, they said, can we go back to the old route so that way we can get off instead of walking through the slush and snow for. Two blocks to get to work. So hopefully we go back to that one.
So I think, Jen, you can confirm this. You and I had this conversation about a year and a half ago about returning. Back to the original route once the bridge was done. Uh, and I think we considered it would be a good idea. So you don't have to answer that. I don't want you to incriminate yourself. Uh, Council Richard.
Yeah, no, I echo what Council Baxter Baxter was saying, two and three. The sooner the better. Um, we did that because there was no bridge to drive on and it just makes the most sense, the eight people in one year. Um, versus the seven hundred that stop in Nicola and Chapman. I mean, the numbers are there. Um, close to the school, Diamond Vale West, not or Coldwater West not being served, where about half the population lives like in the Diamond Vale. That part of town, where the other half of merit living in other areas. Uh, it's underserved and I think having a stop at Bob's is very central. And yeah, it's perfect. The sooner the better. Thanks.
Council Rogan.
Just a question for staff. Um, I am positive that we have already discussed this and approved that we wanted to go back to the. The existing um, the prior um plant, didn't we?
There's a discussion. I don't think there was any resolution on it. No.
I believe there was a discussion.
No.
Solution.
And and so I and I think the other question that's important before you make this decision is what is the financial implications? So is it financially? Uh, uh, what is the analysis of going back to two different routes versus keeping one route and adding on that additional portion of service? Um, if we're talking about being fiscally uh minded around transit, maybe there we should have a cost analysis from B C Transit on the. Use of those two, two options. Because it's another bus, it's another driver. I don't know. Is it worth considering?
Council Rogan.
So I feel that uh. We have, we have proved that this service wasn't needed in that way. So we have to go back there and figure it out, you know, how we can handle those two rounds. Nothing else.
Council Baxter.
Is there any way we could meld the two routes together by getting rid of the Midday Valley Road and just making it a big loop as one giant? Route.
And I guess that's the question on where we might have to have transit input on that. I mean. This one might be one that we hold over for a little bit until we can get some cost analysis and what would work best. I don't think we want to make any kind of decisions here on this right now, because. I mean, we do realize that that piece of the community has to be brought back into the service. But does it make sense to have another route or does it make sense to extend when we already have a little further? So I would like to see some cost analysis on that before we make the decision on this. I I I agree, we've got to get. Uh, Coldwater Avenue West back online, but what's the best, the most cost effective way to do it? Like, we've just talked about fare rates, right? So we're talking another bus and another driver, that means fare rates are gonna go up. So I mean, we've just had that conversation. So maybe we should have a look at what, you know, if we can get one or two different options on what. This would look like and what the costing would be, I think it would help us out a little bit. That's just me, though. Council Richard.
Uh, the key that we can look at here is we can request an increase to service. And right now, Midi Valley Road was the route that we had to go on because that was the only safe route. Um, we have two and three and Coldwater West is being underserved. So I just think even reverting back to that and then look looking at a service change in the future, twenty twenty six or whenever is possible. The new facility that's gonna employ a lot of people, yes, I could see that people could use the service and we'd probably have good ridership. But also, there is a stop that's on Hill right by fur as well, and that's somewhat close. And. As that develops more, there's probably gonna be other walking uh streets. If they develop the residential that's in that area behind the commercial, if that ever happens, that that may change as well. That's just a thought. I just think that we should go back to two and three and that we should look at a service request later. That's my two cents.
So council, where do you want to go with this? Oh, CEO.
Um, I guess. A question to Jen or uh Danica about. Um, when we're looking or or mid hat, is we're looking at these rates that we're talking about and um what we currently pay for transit. What changes if we go back to Route two and three in regards to all these projections? Right? Is there a change in in the costs and the cost recovery now? Um, if we go back to this, I think I think we're looking at two things that are going to impact. Um, our overall costs and our ability to cost recover, which are the changes in rates. Now the change in going back to a service that we might not be budgeted for now. I don't, and I wasn't here at the time, so I don't know if our budget fits having two and three or if our budget is for two, three.
Respectfully through the chair. We don't actually expect there to be a notice noticeable cost discrepancy between these two options. We're not proposing to increase or decrease um costs at this time for for these, for this. Peace. Um. So there wouldn't be an increase in number of operators or reduction. Between the two or buses. So it's uh. Hopefully that that helps.
Yeah. Because we would be working on historical data because it was already done at one point in time, right? Yeah, so.
That's correct.
So, um. I guess we council seems to be uh would like to move forward with remote. Yeah, well, next, next meeting, yeah. Any other questions from council? Thank you, Jen. Appreciate it. Thank you, Danica. Thank you, the team. Anything else from transit uh before we let you fly away? No?
Thank you very much.
No, thank you very much.
Have a good night.
Yeah, you be 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 prepared to see us at U B C M most likely. So we just couldn't pass up that opportunity, right? Thank you again, everyone. Thank you. The council? Anything else? So, uh, termination, anything from council? Any quick? Anything from staff? Terminated. Thank you very much, everyone. Thank you. Good meeting. Thank you very much.